All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Time is 9:00 a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for their open business meeting. We have Commissioner LaCiando with us today. Commissioner Malloy is absent. Also on with us, we have Bob Perkins, Sarah Roberts, Assistant Bob McQuaid, Treasurer Beth Mon. We have Sean Rain, Director of VMS with us. We have Elizabeth Duncan, Director of Communications with us. We have Jason Fry also with us. And we have, in the room, we'll start with you, Bob.
Bob Batista, Boidah. Bruce Cristo, operations side.
Wake up, Bruce. You need some coffee.
I'm focused.
Number Phillips, operations.
Okay, and?
Phil McGrath, clerk.
Great, all right. Welcome, everyone. Any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
Okay. All righty then, we're going to start with unfinished business. And Diana, I'm going to need a motion to remove that unfinished business from the table.
Okay, yes, no, Chair. I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye. Hi. Hi, hi, guys. Have it, motion carries. Okay, first up, we have procurement. We have a final ranking and award recommendation for RFP 20060. Where is Bob? There you go. Morning, Bob.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, perfect. Well, Madam Chair and Commissioners, the evaluation team for RFP 20060, the electronic monitoring for Ada County Sheriff's Office, was prepared to give an award recommendation to this morning. However, there was a protest submitted by Idaho Monitoring Services. The basis of the protest was that number one ranked proposer, Settle Officer Services, is proposing a SCRAM continuous monitoring device that IMS claims only they can provide. So, we followed up with Settle Officer Services, and they got a letter from the same dealer saying that they can provide that device. But we wanted to get this a little further to allow this protest to work through, so we'd like to request that this be retabled to the September 8th, 2020, open business meeting.
Sounds good. Yeah, thanks for sending that information over early. Appreciate that. Okay, any questions, Commissioner? Or do you want to go ahead and make a motion to retable?
I'll retable. Madam Chair, I move to retable the final ranking and award recommendation for RFP 20060, electronic monitoring for Ada County Sheriff's Office, to September 8th, 2020.
I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. Next up, Bob, final ranking requested for negotiations.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioner LaCiando. Before this morning, we have RFQ 20065, the commission agent for the new coroner's facility. And the evaluators have completed the evaluations, and we would like to submit a letter of the final rankings for your consideration.
Okay.
All right, I have a letter dated September 1st, 2020, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFQ 20065. Dear members on the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFQ 20065. A short list of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. A short list of qualified firms ranked in order by evaluation scoring is as follows. Number one, Seed Idaho PC with a score of 91.0. Number two, Northwest Engineering Services Incorporated with a score of 81.67. Number three, Blue Sky Consulting Services with a score of 80.0. Number four, VBFA with a score of 72.67. Number five, Cateruma and Associates, 71.67. Number six, World Commission Group Incorporated with a score of 70.67. Number seven, Griffith Engineering Incorporated with a score of 66.67. And finally, number eight, Levy Engineering Building Commissioning LLC with a score of 66.67. The evaluation committee would like to request the board's approval of the final rankings and permission to enter into fee negotiations, beginning with the number one ranked firm. If negotiations are successful, the operations department will put back on the board's agenda for contract award consideration. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner LaCiando, did you hear the number one ranking, the name and the amount, clearly?
Let me just make sure I have it correct. I have Seed Idaho PC with a score of 91.0.
Yes, they're the number one, and a vote for the number one for the final rankings in total.
Okay. Okay, before you make the motion, Commissioner, Bruce, is there anything you would like to comment on? Is this a company you've worked with before?
Yes, we've worked with them before, and they've far exceeded what we required in the field, and for the end results, very good firm, and we're happy to have them.
Great, so Bruce said that they've worked with them before, and they've far exceeded their expectations in the past, so they're excited to work with them. So with that, you want to go ahead and make the motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to accept the final rankings for RFQ 20065, commissioning agent for new coroner's facility, and authorize the operations department to enter into fee negotiations, starting with the number one ranked firm.
All right, I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. All right, thank you. Let's take up new business now. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing on Resolution 254A for sole source procurement. Let's go ahead. Bob, is Bob still up there? Are you speaking to this one on the jail security cameras?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is for a sole source for the replacement cameras for the Ada County Sheriff's Office jail security system.
Yeah, Bob, hold on a second. Commissioner LaCiando, can you mute your? Okay, there you go. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Bob, now we can hear you.
Yeah, this is a sole source for the purchase of cameras for the Ada County jail. The vendor is Integrated Security Resources. They initially installed these cameras during the installation of the jail's security system back in 2018. And so, for reliability and integrity of the system, they're wanting to purchase the cameras from this group to provide that continuity.
Okay. Any further testimony? Anyone from the Sheriff's Department? Okay, hearing done. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner LaCiando?
Hey, Madam Chair. I move to approve Resolution number 2548 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. Next, we're going to open the public hearing on Resolution 2549. This is authorizing a grant of approximately 1.7 acres of county-owned real property. This is a quick claim deed to the city of Boise. Commissioner LaCiando, you want to say a few words about this?
So, just for the public's awareness, this is actually Simplot Field, which has been more than 20 years Ada County has owned, but the city of Boise has managed.
Yeah, I don't think this is the Simplot Field.
Oh, this isn't, okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner LaCiando speaks to this one.
Oh, go ahead.
So, this resolution relates to some real property that Ada County acquired by tax deed back in 2011. It's located near Amity and Coal. And more specifically, this piece of land, it's between property owned by the city of Boise and the New York Canal. And again, we've had this almost 10 years. The county derives no benefit from owning this parcel, and the city of Boise has expressed their interest in taking ownership of it, since they do own the adjoining property. This is for a quick claim to transfer property acquired with tax deed from the county to the city of Boise.
So this would relieve the county of administrative responsibilities and potential liability?
Correct, it would transfer ownership.
Yep. All right, Commissioner LaCiando, questions? No, go ahead and make the motion then. We'll close the public hearing.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution number 2549 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. Next up?
And I need to do the quick claim deed as well, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Madam Chair, I move to authorize the chair to sign the quick claim deed for parcel number S1125449200.
I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. Right, that concludes our public hearings, and we're going to go ahead and move into licenses, and I'll need a motion for licenses.
Madam Chair, if the clerk's office would mind sharing their review of this peddler's license before I make that motion, I'd appreciate it.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner LaCiando, we have received all the documentation for this peddler's license. It has been reviewed, including the background check, and has been approved by our office.
What exactly is it? I was looking at, I was trying to, I was struggling with exactly what they're doing.
Solar system? Like, trying to get solar panels, I think. Go indoor, it's door-to-door sale. That's what the peddler license is. Door-to-door sales of solar, residential, commercial solar.
Okay. Door-to-door sales, residential, for solar sales, solar panel sales.
The email address may be informative, it's solarchicken.com.
Solarchicken.com. Any questions?
Not necessarily a question, more a comment. I know we've had folks reach out to our office when they've been the recipients of door-to-door sales recently, sort of wondering why we're approving them, given COVID, and you know, I don't think we have a reason not to approve them, but I think, you know, as you guys reach out to this person to tell him he's been approved, maybe encourage him to be following all the precautions.
Well, I think we could probably add that to it. Because of COVID, I think that we can approve it conditioned upon them wearing a mask at all times and maintaining six foot of social distancing with any resident that they're trying to come in contact with. Can we add that to it?
I think what we can do is pass on exactly what Commissioner LaCiando, the recommendations. We get so few of these, I think, just generally, I think you guys are aware of that, but I think we can pass on those recommendations that they take in appropriate safety measures in terms of doing this. This is, just to note too, I think you know this, but for anybody listening, this is just the unincorporated areas of Ada County that they're specifically getting licensed for.
All right, with that, you want to go ahead and approve it?
Sure. Sorry, I'm muting and unmuting myself.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one peddler license and one new license, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. All right, next up, the clerk's office. We have some election results. Let's stay to school.
I'll start. Commissioners, it's good to see you. I decided to show up. I'm sure, hopefully not you, but I haven't seen you guys. I went from seeing you a lot to not seeing you at all, basically, for the month of August. August felt like a blur to me.
It was.
I'm happy to be here in September. We've had a lot going on in our office. That's a serious understatement of things. I think, as you were aware, last week was the special session for the Idaho State Legislature. I was very heavily involved during this special session, specifics to election legislation. In the end, one of the proposals that I had put forth was adopted by the legislature and signed by Governor Little. The other was not, it got halfway, and the Senate supported it, the House did not. And so, we will be working towards regular polling places for the November election. Actually, today, it's kind of neat, there's a joint press conference between the Idaho Republican Party and the Idaho Democratic Party to help us recruit poll workers. I'll be there with them, as well as Chrissy Yamamoto from Canyon County, as part of our efforts. I think that, you know, I'll say from us, it'll be interesting, we may be overrun with volunteers for poll workers, because already, I was told yesterday, we've received 750 applications in the past month. And so, people have heard the call and are answering it.
That's great.
So we'll work through, I think there's, going to the conversation we just had, one of the things, we are working with Central District Health, they've approved our protocols for the polls, and that may be a filtering mechanism, too. Some of the volunteers may not want, you know, we are requiring masks for all poll workers, and we've already acquired face shields and some other things. So we'll be working through, making sure expectations are clear for everybody involved. I will say, it was, I'm sure we'll have subsequent conversations, being over at the legislature was beyond interesting last week, not just the circus that was reported in the news, but also just the tensions in that building. I've never felt that building anywhere near as tense as it was, just among the elected folks involved. And so, that was just interesting to see and telling, and probably a forecast for what will come in January. I think January is going to be very different than ever before. And so, it was enlightening to see that. As noted, Madam Chair, we did have an election last Tuesday. We had the August election. It was also during the middle of the special session while we were discussing elections legislation, go figure. A really interesting election overall. This was the West Ada School District levy election. It was the same levy that had been put on the ballot in May. I think West Ada was extremely pleased, because it did pass, and to their surprise, I don't think they actually expected it to pass. Turnout was 28%. Really high turnout for an August election, extremely high turnout. That was largely driven by the fact that people had requested an absentee ballot in the May election, and checked the boxes, right? So at the very beginning, we mailed out a lot of ballots. We mailed out over 40,000 absentee ballots for this election. And this is, I think, the most telling part and most interesting. Of those, just over 30,000 absentee ballots were returned and voted. And you compare that, we did have, because the normal rules applied, there was no legislative changes for this election. We had 70 different polling locations open, representing, I think, 76 precincts, give or take one or two. And across those, we only had 5,500 people show up. So it was 30,000 versus mail 5,500 in person, which I think is, you know, people have questioned, like, I've thrown out big numbers at times, but this is a good indicator of what we may see come November. I don't think it will be this slanted in November, but nonetheless, we are going to have a very heavy absentee portion of the election, and then it'll be interesting to see how the in-person goes as a result. We're working on that. But the election went smoothly. I'm also happy to report, it was our first election where every polling location took advantage of the electronic poll books that we purchased. So, every polling site. We learned a lot. It was, in a lot of ways, we're very thankful to have an August election, because it helped us work through a few kinks, both with getting the electronic poll books out, but also with the new statewide voter registration system. The Secretary of State is also replacing the statewide voter registration system simultaneously. That's actually been more challenging. So we're working through these things. But the election itself went very smoothly. We had results out, it was an early election for us to wrap up, again, because we'd had the mail done in advance. And so, one of the things this morning you do need to do is certify the results as the Board of canvassers. We will then send those over to the West Ada School District for their adoption. Yeah, and we are 63 days away from November 3rd.
But who's counting, right?
Yes, but who's counting? I think we have multiple countdowns. That is a very short timeframe, and we have a lot of heavy left. It's interesting, I know I've conversed with Commissioner LaCiando, the interest in the November election is way higher than normal at this point in time. It always amps up as you get closer to the election, but the specific questions we're getting so early. So we're, we've wrapped up the August election, and so we're quickly working on a whole bunch of information. I think one of the things we're going to do, and you'll see more information come, is National Voter Registration Day is coming up, I believe it's on September 22nd. We're looking at trying to host a digital town hall to answer a lot of people's elections questions in advance of the election. I'm just trying to get as much information out of it and say it. So, and then, there's plenty of other things going on, I think you are all aware of it. You know, new ADJ and all sorts of other things going on in our office, so.
Yeah. Yes, Chris.
So, Phil, could you share where we're at on polling locations? It's fantastic news that we have so many poll workers. I guess, you know, I continue to be concerned, I know you are, about how many locations we have used in the past that aren't necessarily great, such as retirement communities. Could you share kind of what your latest thinking is there?
Yeah, absolutely. So, in terms of, this is a common question we're getting, but in terms of timeline, I just want to emphasize again, we just finished the August election. So we actually haven't, we're just starting the polling place, solidifying polling places for November. We always finish the one and then start the next one. So, it's early in the process. We do have to have those to you by the beginning of October, so don't worry, we're on that timetable. We anticipate we will have most. We are going to have to consolidate, again, to what you just referenced, Commissioner LaCiando. We're not going to be in any of the senior centers or assisted living centers. There are places we anticipate will say no. We know that, we learned a lot about this through the August election, where we did also have to consolidate in August as well. We expect to do that. Probably the biggest saving grace for us, which we might see different in other counties throughout the state, is both the Boise School District and the West Ada School District have already published on their calendars that election day will be an e-learning day. There will be no in-person, you know, independent of the other conversations going on with public education, but those days will be, the buildings will be available to us. They've intentionally made those steps to make the building. So that alone immediately opens up, you know, 90-plus locations for us to be able to socially distance and other things, and then we'll be filling in around that. So we will have a healthy number of polling locations. It's more about now getting all the materials in place, and then the geographic distribution. That might be one of the challenges that we face, is making sure we cover every area.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, no, I know you guys are on top of it. I guess, I can, I worry, you know, how quickly you can turn around and change and let people know where their new polling location is, and that's just, I know you have a challenge with that every year, but it's a heightened awareness and concern this year.
Yeah, and just to add, we will be, I mean, this is part of our normal practice, as you wrote, we will be sending out letters to anyone's polling places that have changed, and we're actually working on a mail piece, potentially to all registered voters, just to remind them what their options are for voting, you know, whether that's in-person early or at the polls, where their polling location is. We did this previously in presidential elections. It seems under these circumstances to be just a good practice. I think over-communicating rather than under-communicating as we move forward with this. I was on the phone with the city of Boise this morning. We are adding Dropbox locations throughout, and there's almost nothing that we can touch that somebody isn't ready to criticize at this point, but we've even looked into, I think we figured out where we will be able to put security cameras at all of the Dropboxes as well, in a fairly easy and low-cost manner. Heck, our new Dropboxes even have their own fire suppression systems, if you can imagine. So we are, we're trying to address everything, but it is a stall in the team with 63 days. I mean, between now and the next 30 days, we will end up mailing out, you know, well over 100,000 ballots, and the election will be underway here shortly. You know, I'm sure Commissioner LaCiando, you're not paying attention to that, but I know many, many others are.
We're just happy that the boxes were picked up on the streets.
Yes.
Yeah, they're still there. All right, so we have for the, to certify the election, we have 2,412 votes against, representing 43.6%, and then we have 3,120 votes in favor, representing 56.4%. So with that, you care to certify, make the motion to certify the results?
Sure thing. Madam Chair, pursuant to Idaho Code 34-1410 and 34-1205, which requires the Board of County Commissioners to canvas election returns, I move to certify the election results as presented for the West Ada School Levy election held on August 25th, 2020.
All right, I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. They are certified.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work and your team. All right, Claims Journal, I'll need a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair. I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claim Journal dated August 31st, 2020.
Second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. Next up, I'll need a motion for the personal action forms.
I move to approve the personal action forms as listed on the agenda, including three leaves with pay and that December sheet remain on file with the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. Next up, Assessor's Office. Good morning, Bob. What's you need to unmute?
Now can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you. Good morning.
Madam Chairman, I didn't know if you went to get Steve Rutherford for me. I certainly didn't intend that. I just thought maybe he was sitting in a room, and you could have just, he could have just said something, so thank you for what you did to, to let me get in touch with him.
Oh, yes, no problem.
I really appreciated that. I'm just going to report on the appraisal side and the motor vehicle side. On the appraisal side, where we are right now is, this is where we're out inspecting all of the 20% of the parcels that statute says we have to physically take a look at every year, and that's what's going on right now. We will be doing that up through December. The housing market is just, is just extremely hot. It's up 12% so far this year on single-family. So I just don't know when it's going to slow down. Each month, it comes in a little bit stronger than it was before. We have 47 hearings scheduled for the Board of Tax Appeals. Those hearings are going to start the week of the 21st of September. As I mentioned last week, we'll try to settle three of those as we can prior to going to a hearing, and we will certainly work with you on the resolution of those. On the motor vehicle side, our wait times are back down to about five minutes. I reported several weeks ago that our wait times are, this is our average wait times, we're running at about 10 to 15 minutes, but we've got those back under control right now. And October 3rd, 20th is going to be a big day for us with motor vehicles. That is when the Transportation Department is scheduled to release their new motor vehicle register, registering software. And we cannot help but remember what had happened when they rolled out their driver's license software. That was very problematic, and we had a lot of adverse press on that, and we're hoping that ICD has learned our lessons, and that the October 13th rollout will go much smoother. Madam Chairman, Commissioner LaCiando, ask to report from the Assessor's Office this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCiando, any questions?
Hello, Julianne, you want to make a motion?
Julianne has done his con this morning, so he's coming to report back to me.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Assessor McQuaid, and then next we'll move to the Treasurer's Office, and we have Beth Mon.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's September 1st. The first day of the month keeps rolling around like clockwork, so our staff is just busy doing all the reconciliations for the county. And then otherwise, you know, I know Phil talked about a 63-day calendar. I think our countdown's more like 70 days until we generate the tax bills, so we're in constant communications with the clerk's office regarding levies and with the State Tax Commission. At this point, it's just a lot of behind-the-scenes preparations, testing, balancing, just ensuring that we're ready. So, no other big updates, just a lot of behind-the-scenes work in preparation of the new fiscal year and 2020 tax drive.
Great, any questions for Treasurer Mon? Thanks, Beth, good to see you.
You too.
Tell your staff we said hello, and.
Will do.
Thanks for all their hard work. All right, Commissioner LaCiando, I'll need approval of minutes.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. We have a third in the background. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. Next, I'll need a motion for weed and pest notice and release of liens.
Madam Chair, I move to approve two notices of liens and two releases of liens for weed and pests as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, nice, have it, motion carries. Next up, Expo Idaho. So we have one interim event. We do have Bob Batista with us here today. Anything you'd like to share with the board this morning?
Madam Chair, Commissioner LaCiando, these are outdoor events that are flag football. We've actually had them approve their plan through CDC, or Central District Health, excuse me. And they've separated this out and actually off, adding extra days and not going off Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, so that they're separate. Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, so that they're separate, and I feel very comfortable with what they're doing, so I just wanted to bring it to you in case you had any questions.
Okay, plan was approved by Central District Health, any questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, the only question I have is that in some of these instances, you know, the players are doing their thing, and that's great, it's sometimes the parents who aren't necessarily social distancing, so Bob, if you could just make sure to check in with them, but that's our expectation.
Yep, I certainly will, Commissioner LaCiano.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead then and entertain a motion for interim event.
Okay, oh, hold on. As you can see, I'm juggling a lot of things over here. Madam Chair, I move to approve the one interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Bob's over here going like this, we have some business. All right, ayes, ayes have it, motion carries, you have an interim event.
Thank you.
Still working on childcare.
I know.
All right, thanks, Bob. All right, agreements, we have a number of agreements here, 61. Are there, is there anything in the agreements, Commissioner LaCiano, that you wanted to address or talk about before we just make a motion for all of the agreements?
Yeah, there's one I'd like to pull just to understand a little bit better and not oppose, I just want to understand it. One of them is an agreement with the Parma Senior Center with Sheriff's Labor Detail, and I'd just like to confer with legal or the Sheriff's Office about using inmates to go out of county and what our roles and responsibilities are when they're out of county, since Parma's in Gannon County. So if we could pull that, I would appreciate that.
Okay, what number is that? What agreement number? If you want, on the motion, just go ahead and make the motion and include the agreement number.
Hold on just a second.
I see Ada County, Meridian. It's T. Okay, it's agreement 13878.
13878. Okay, so Madam Chair, I will move to table agreement number 13878 pending further discussion to, we'll table it to the September 8th agenda.
Okay, I'll second that, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ladies have it, motion carries. Okay, you want to go ahead then and make a motion for the remaining agreements, so that would be 60.
Lots of agreements.
It's that time of year.
There's that time. Yeah, and some really important ones on here. You know, I want to call out one that I just had a chance to discuss yesterday at Treasure Valley Partnership, our agreement to fund a special prosecutor in this valley, and that we haven't had the same level of gain problems as even other communities, and that's a strong example of us all partnering together. So with that, Madam Chair, I move to approve the 60 agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
All right, I'll second that, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ladies have it, motion carries. Next up, procurement, we have opening of RFP 20077, Ada County Towing Services. Bob Perkins?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner LaCiano. Before you this morning, we have the opening of RFP 20077, Ada County Towing Services, and Jacobs pulled up his screen to share with you all. What we're looking for today is to read the proposers into the record, and we have four proposals submitted for this project.
All right, we have All American Towing LLC, we have BMW Wrecker, we have Boise Valley Towing, and we have KAMCO Enterprises, Inc. And would you like to table this for final rankings?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Judiciary Team will need some time to look at these proposals, and we would like to table a final ranking and award recommendation to the September 8, 2020 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Commissioner LaCiano?
Madam Chair, I move to table final rankings and award recommendations for RFP 20077, Ada County Towing Services, September 8, 2020.
Yeah, I'll second that, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ladies have it, motion carries. Next up miscellaneous, renewal of professional services agreement, first step, donor by design, I believe we have Jason Frye with us. Jason, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Kenyon.
How are you?
Commissioner LaCiano, hello? Good, how are you all?
Good, good. So we just wanted to have you give us a quick overview, progress report update, and then also, I was curious, because the amount that you put in the new contract exceeded the amount that we had identified, the 50,000, and I think the amount that you had in here was closer to 60, if I'm not mistaken. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Okay, great. So I submitted a packet update, I'm not sure if all of you have had a chance to review that, but we've had some great momentum and progress even despite COVID during the past several months. I think the greatest accomplishment has been our recruitment of the leadership cabinet, which obviously is essential for a successful campaign to move forward. At the time, we were, at the beginning of August, we were at 12 leadership members, and now we're at 17. And if I were, I don't think I'm able to share a screen, which is fine, I can kind of talk through it today, but we have also recruited three co-chairs at this point, and so not only do we have leadership, we also have co-chairs to really champion this. And I will say that this has been, for many of these individuals, they, you know, this is not sitting on a board, this is not a new organization, this is really rolling their sleeves up to try to understand how to combat issue in the county. So a lot of excitement and enthusiasm over it, say that there has been some just hesitancy to make commitments, financial commitments right now, given the uncertainty of just the scope of the world right now, you know. So I think people are committed philanthropically, in concept and theory, we have verbal commitments for about a million dollars so far from just our leadership cabinet, and that's just a handful of them to this point. Our goal is to have about 3 million committed, around the neighborhood of 3 million committed just from our leadership cabinet, and the hope was to have that by the end of this year. It's proving a little bit nuanced, obviously, with COVID and trying to navigate that landscape. But the case is plenty strong, knowing that in Ada County, there's an average of about 180 families right now that are on a waiting list to receive or to be placed in housing, to find housing, and otherwise, they're either in a shelter, they're on the street, in their cars, and so knowing that this is our focus, to try to bring that number down to zero has been a compelling case for people to get on board and to really champion this. So in addition to me, in providing kind of this fundraising oversight, we have two other subgroups that are, that are a part of this. One is really the systems and the solutions team, so they're working with all the on-the-ground providers, so health and welfare, the county, the city, the nonprofits, to coordinate efforts to make sure that we're addressing this need as best and efficiently as we can and to reduce any redundancies and overlap. We also have a storytelling team, as we're calling it, to ramp up communications to the community, because we know this is not just a, it's not just a city issue, it's not just a county issue, and it's not just a 17-person leadership cabinet issue, we've got to pull together as a community to be able to champion this and for folks to understand. So we are ramping up communications efforts to try to educate the broader community on what is going on, what's the issue, and how do we solve it together.
Jason, are those what you call coaching sessions? Video, what's, are those video coaching sessions in your scope of work here?
Right now, we have a weekly, a weekly meeting with our, kind of our organizing team on this, and that's the solutions team, fundraising team, and the storytelling team to try to navigate strategy to move forward. So I wish it was as easy as we just sit down with these 17 cabinet members and just ask them to write a check over to us, but there's a lot of questions, as you can imagine, when people are committing sizable chunks of a gift and an investment, and we have to do our best to create a sense of assurance that we're going in the right direction and that we are, we have real solutions that are practical and meaningful. So when it comes to the scope of my contract, I would say, I, this is a little unusual for me, as I'm more used to working with an existing not-for-profit who has an executive director and who has a development department, and I am really serving more as the on-the-ground development department on behalf of the county, the city, and really this effort, because the city currently doesn't have a development professional either. So I am sitting down having dozens of phone calls and face-to-face meetings and Zoom meetings with our leadership cabinet and with others to bring them along to educate and to get them closer to this campaign here to move it forward.
So Jason, do you also have a contract with the city of Boise?
I do not, no. They, so the city is under contract with Agnew Beck, and Agnew Beck is really helping spearhead the system solutions and the storytelling piece of this, whereas I'm really spearheading the fundraising side. But they're all, as you can imagine, they're all interrelated.
Okay. So for the 5,000 per month, for 12, for 12 months, just so the, so the taxpayers, so we can track with this, will you be able to give us like a quarterly report on your, where you're at with your goals? And I think it doesn't have to be, you know, a full, you know, report, but just kind of high-level executive, how you're tracking, especially with COVID, so we can kind of look at this on a per-quarter basis and see where we're, where we're at, whether the resources or help, you know, we need to provide.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just so you know, this is, the expectation of capital campaign, we're seeing around the country, we're saying 18 to 24 months is probably a typical timeline, and just being so, you know, we're what, six months into COVID right now, that's definitely bumping back some of the timing on this. My hope would be that by next, by this time next year, that we've, we're at about 75% of our campaign goal, like we're ready to enter into a community phase of the campaign.
Okay, and I think for transparency for the public, if you could, on your scope of work, put down the approximate hours, because it doesn't have, it has every two weeks, 12 months, and then the amount, but it doesn't have hours, and I think the public, you would like to know what, you know, the county is spending. So if you could add that component to the agreement, I think that would be great. Commissioner LaCiano, any questions or comments on your end?
That's a question, more a comment, again, for sort of public transparency perspective. I don't know, I know you have some commitments, but I don't think your commitments are ready to publicly shout their financial commitment, but if you, I think it's wholly appropriate if you were able to share, just sort of read off who we have recruited for the leadership team, I think that would be it.
That'd be great.
Yep, absolutely. And now some of these will, when their gifts come, they will be anonymous, and some will say, you can use my name, but right now, they've all allowed us to use their names for leadership. So here's who we have, co-chairing, I mentioned three co-chairs, so Tommy Alquist, Tracy Leibig, and then Andrea Roop. The rest of the leadership cabinet include Bee Black from Women's Children's Alliance, Odette Bolano from St. Elphonsus, Shawna Doer, Kami Phaler from the Micron Foundation, Pete Gamber from IndyDwell, Lisa Gro, CEO of Idaho Power, Commissioner LaCiano represents the county on that, Mayor McLean representing the city, Skip Oppenheimer from Oppenheimer Corporation, Andy Scoggan formerly of Albertson's, Chris Roth of St. Luke's, Janelle Wise from Laura Moore Cunningham Foundation, and then Tyson Wise from Walnut Grove Financial. So we've got what we feel is kind of an A-level team to be out representing this cause and wave a flag for family homelessness.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jason, for being here with us today and sharing this with the public, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we don't need to make a motion on that, it'll come up as an agreement, I think, on our next OBM, so I think we're ready to move to post-employment health plan policy change. Cassie?
Good morning.
Hi, you want to just give the public a quick overview of what this is?
Yeah, this is a, policy is for one of our benefits enhancements that was brought to the Board last spring from our Total Reward Task Force, and effective October 1st, our sick leave sweep will be increased from 40% to 50%, and adds a benefit for employees who are retiring from Ada County to have their sick leave swept into their post-employment health fund as well.
It's a positive thing for employees, any comments or questions, Phil?
I appreciate all Cassie's work, I know Trent worked very heavily with the task force and come up with these recommendations, so very supportive of the efforts.
Cassie and her team has been, I think over time, as yours has been during COVID, it's like sometimes when you don't see folks in here, you don't realize how behind the scenes how busy everyone is, and I know that your team has really accomplished a lot with very few folks. Absolutely, we appreciate that. Commissioner LaCiano?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll echo that and note, I really appreciate the work that your team did, Cassie, to bring a group of employees together to share what their top issues are, and just want to give you major kudos for the process you went through on that.
Okay, you're fading out, Commissioner LaCiano, I don't know what happened, but your, your voice was fading a little bit there, I think we got it all, though. So with that, do you want to go ahead and make the motion to approve the post-employment health plan change?
Sure. Madam Chair, I move to adopt the post-employment health plan policy change to the employee handbook.
All right, I'll second that, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ladies have it, motion carries. Thanks, Cassie.
Thank you.
Again, appreciate all your work, please share that with your staff, really appreciate it. Industrial Commission Case Number 2019002329, this is stipulation and agreement for lump sum settlement agreement, and the agreement number is 13883. All right, so do we have anyone here to speak to this?
I can do it.
Okay, Cassie?
This is just a standard workers' compensation, closing a claim out and making it final with a lump sum settlement at the end, so this is just a standard process for some of our work companies.
Okay, did you hear that, Commissioner LaCiano? Okay, any questions? If not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the Industrial Commission Case Number 2019-002329, stipulation and agreement for lump sum settlement.
I'll second that, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ladies have it, motion carries. The next one is the Capital Crimes Defense Fund election ballot. I don't think we, let's not move on this yet, because I don't think you and Patrick have been in the office to actually look at who's on the ballot, or have you been able to?
I have.
Okay.
I have.
All right. So I put myself down after a conversation with Tony Geddes, and I've been working with Representative, well, not Representative anymore, Gerald Bowles, who is now unfortunately, he's chairing, but he's, he's stepping down. So I really feel, you know, strongly, I threw my hat in the ring to sit on this committee. Some of the concerns that have been voiced to me is that the public defenders themselves don't have a voice, their voice is not being heard on the committee level, at the Defense Fund Committee level, and so I think that it could certainly help be an advocate for them and make sure that their voice is heard, and any questions, concerns, or whatnot that they may have get addressed. So it's not like I feel like I'm an expert, you know, on what this committee does, I can certainly learn, but that's really my motivation, is just going in wanting to be an advocate for, for the folks that need to be heard there.
Well, I'd like to support your nomination, not only for that, but also because, as in many cases, I believe we are the largest county funder of the Capital Crimes Defense Fund, and so I just think it's really critical that when we are burying the lion's share of funding those resources, certainly want other counties to have their say too, but I think it's important for us to have a voice. So with that, I would move to nominate, or excuse me, I guess, well, I would move to vote for, from the Ada County vote, Mr. Kenyon for the Capital Crimes Defense Fund.
All right, I'll second that, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ladies have it, motion carries. That does not mean I'm on the committee, now it goes into a pool with other applicants of the nominees. All right, anything else, let's see, what do we have? I think that's it, any further discussion, anyone? Phil, anything?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn, we'll go into recess, and we'll reconvene. It's Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, and the time is 9:50 a.m. Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session to meet with Emergency Medical Services District Director Sean Rain is with us, and then we have Commissioner Laciando. Commissioner Mendeloy is absent today. We also have with us Steve Rutherford. So with that, are there any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and we'll move to Claims Journal, New Business, under New Business, and I'll need a motion.
Oh, hold up. Hold on just a second here. Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated August 31st, 2020 regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice have it. Motion carries. Next up, personal action forums, one leave with pay. I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personal action forums as listed on the agenda, including one leave with pay and that summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioners' Office.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice have it. Motion carries. Next up, it looks like we've got three agreements. Before we approve the agreements, Sean, is there anything that you'd like to tell us about the PEP program or the agreements between us and St. Luke's?
Sorry, I was having some difficulty unmuting my computer. Madam Chair, the, the first agreement between the county and in support of the PEP program, one of the things that John Blake and I are working on is figuring out a plan for reopening our community paramedic program. Currently, we have zero people out on quarantine or isolation. Our staffing levels are, are pretty stable. We're a little cautious going into fall, just realizing that there could be an impact to staffing, and so he and I are putting a plan to get that, that program back up and running, and that would apply to both of those contracts, you know, seeing patients from St. Luke's and the PEP program.
Any questions, Commissioner Laciando?
Not a question. Just want to advocate support for getting it reopened. I was at my Alabama House board meeting yesterday, and, you know, the need was high before COVID, and it is, if not, you know, just as high, higher, given the strain that people are feeling. So whatever we can do to safely do that, obviously trust your judgment to make that happen.
Thank you. Okay, with that, you care to make the motion?
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to approve the three agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice have it. Motion carries. All right, general discussion. Sean, how's it going?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Laciando, we're super busy out here, obviously. You know, just wrapping up some year-end purchases. We just purchased an additional electrostatic decontamination fogger so that we can place one of those units on the west side of the county so that we don't bring our units all the way into Benjamin, leaving, you know, areas of the west county uncovered. So we'll have two of those. That also helps decon from the fire units out west. Outside of that, you know, as I mentioned, we have zero people still out on quarantine or isolation, so I'm super happy about that. Tells me that we are doing the right thing both on and off duty, and so we've really been preaching that message to our folks to, to do the right thing. And I do have one additional thing to actually show you guys. Ryan LaRondo, our PIO, just purchased these logo masks for our department. So we'll be handing these out to folks here pretty soon. It's got our logo on it. So gives people another option of their, their pretty nice mask, so.
Good.
With that, I would stand for any questions.
Okay, great. Commissioner Laciando?
So just kudos. I noted, as we were looking at the data as a part of our policy group call, definitely noted that you all have had 0% positivity or quarantine for a number of weeks now, and really says a lot about the, obviously, the precautions you guys are taking on shift are not fun for the things that people have to wear, but appreciate all that people are doing off-shift, too, and just the role models that, that you all have been for the community. Thank you.
Yep, I echo Commissioner Laciando's comments there. Appreciate it. So are, are your ambulance trips down? How are they compared to this time last year? Any comparisons?
Yes, so we actually, Madam Chair, we have stabilized. Our call volume has picked up significantly across the system, and when we look at all call types, including fire, you know, we are running above average, which we would actually expect year to year. Our transport rate has actually stabilized and come back to a normal rates. We're sitting at about 68, 69% of our, our patients are being transported, where we hit a low in April of, you know, just under 50%, which is really unheard of, but I think it just spoke to the, the fear that people had of actually going to the hospital at the time. So that has definitely stabilized, and along with that, you know, revenue has also picked up to coincide with the number of transports we're doing. So super happy to see that.
Okay, great. Anything else? Any further discussion? No? Okay. Thank you, Sean. Really appreciate it. Thanks for being here with us today. We're going to go into legal here in a few minutes. Go ahead and adjourn this meeting.